We get this meeting started?
Yes, probably. We'll allow you to pray.
Thank you very much. Please join me. Dear gracious and heavily Father, thank you so much for this day and thank you for the men and women that have gathered in this room to try to make decisions that are the best for our city. Please lead us in the right path, lead us to make wise decisions and be with each and every person and their family. Please bless us with comfort, with grace, and with dignity. I ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
We will turn the floor to Mr. Kirk.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all about funding items and things. Y'all are obviously aware of all the needs we're developing, are being developed right now in terms of growth and everything else. And so, we talked to you a little bit about impact fees before and most of these gentlemen, I think, have been here with you at times before to talk a little bit about it. So, we wanted to touch back with you on the impact fees and the other options in terms of funding sources. So, I'll turn it over to them. This is Jeff Whitaker with Kimney Horn and John Atkins. Both of them are key to developing our water wastewater master plans and our transportation master plans. Jeff Whitaker?
Well, good evening. Good to see you all again. So, today, we're going to talk to you about impact fees and just give you kind of that. There's a lot of information I'm going to be giving you, so feel free if there's something you don't see and don't understand to ask. I'd rather...
Can I have that?
We do not have any.
Can you get your copy of the papers just now?
Well, what we're going to go over a little bit today is the funding needs, which you've heard a lot of, we won't spend a lot of time on that, just from the water wastewater master plans as well as transportation master plans. Going to go into the options, a little bit about development exactions, which is really kind of the emphasis of impact fees, details on impact fees, a little bit details on street maintenance fees, and we have some other funding elements and discussion. So, first thing I wanted to discuss a little bit is that there's two different types of needs when you look at infrastructure funding. The first need are existing needs. Those are maintenance, those are your potholes, those are operations, those are the waterline breaks, you have to fix it, and then there's complete reconstruction because infrastructure only lasts for so long. At some point in time, you have to replace it, and that's complete reconstruction. Those are existing needs. Those are usually covered by taxes and rates. That's usually the general fund covering those elements. Then there's growth needs, which is your widening, your upsides of sewer lines. That's when we talk about impact fees. Those are capital projects. Those are your big projects to build more capacity, to widen the road, to upsize a sewer line or a water line. There's multitude of funding options. This is not a comprehensive list, but these are the ones that have something on today. What is in red are the funding options that you commonly see associated with growth. These are some items that you see cities implement that deal with growth. The ones that are just black are typically what you see dealing with operations and maintenance and existing infrastructure. Some of them do both, like property taxes will pay for growth, silver bond debt. Typically, you'll see those cover that. The ones with stars, utility fees and impact fees, that's what most of this presentation's going to be about. I will touch on all of them slightly, but most of the presentations, those with stars. So, to introduce impact fees, one of the things that's common for it is development exactions. When a development comes in, they generate demand on the system, there's need for improvements. One of the important things is to understand that when you ask for a developer to do something, it's got to be fair. You can't, you can't ask for, the obvious example I usually use, if one single family comes in, that's the whole development, you can't ask them to build two miles of roadway. It just doesn't make sense. So, really, they have to be proportional. That's what it means. Whatever you ask for the development, right away, construction, water, sewer, off-site damage, drainage, it needs to be roughly proportional. And y'all are doing that today. There's really two ways to do that. One is an individual determination. When a development comes in, you look at his site, you figure out what the needs are, you assess that, you calculate that, you figure out what it costs to build the adjacent roadway, you figure out what it costs to build that. That's done for each applicant. A lot of discussion and time put into that. Or there's an impact fee policy, which in theory, what an impact fee will do, will figure out all that upfront, so that calculation is done. It determines the proportional share of all development and all future infrastructure. One of the things that's different on an impact fee ordinance is you develop a fee. If a developer comes in and builds a roadway, builds the infrastructure that's calculated by fee, they get an offset, so they're not charged twice. They build the infrastructure, they pay the fee. And we'll go into that a little bit as we get into an impact fee. Well, why did impact fees come around? This is a little bit of the history of impact fees, if you will. In 1987 is when the statute was written in Texas. It's chapter 395 of the Local Government Code. I saw someone carrying it. But it's chapter 395. It was written by a combination of the Texas municipal league and the development community. And you may ask, why was the development community asking to write the impact fee statute? Well, at that time, every city was doing something different. They didn't know, there was no rules in place. So, chapter 395, the impact fee statute, is a very lengthy statute compared to other states, and it tells us how to calculate it, so that it would be predictable for the development. So, what the development community was asking for is they wanted some consistency. They wanted some equitable. So, why equitable? Well, the way a lot of cities have is it depended where you locate your property. So, if you were built on, if you chose this piece of property, you might have a lot of requirements to do. If you chose this piece of property, you might have another requirement. What impact fees tries to do is spread that requirement somewhat evenly among all growth. The example I use on the transportation side is a lot of times we'll see single family build a lot of infrastructure, but if a pad side comes in, like a fast food restaurant, well, they usually don't have any improvements required, but they generate a lot of traffic. And so, is that really fair that the single family's picking up the improvements and the fast food restaurants not? We want it to be predictable. That's what we hear from the development community, that's why they wanted it. On an impact fee, you can pull up a spreadsheet or an online tool and you can say, okay, if I build a house, it's this dollars, if I build a commercial building, it's this dollars. If I pull a meter, a water and wastewater meter, it would be this amount of dollars. Another thing is this proportional. It goes back to what I discussed a second ago. You know, it's figuring out what that fair share cost is going to be, so it's legal. Just going to, overall, when you're developing, whether it's an impact fee program or whether it's the unified, you know, your subdivision ordinance, or you want a system that's predictable, equitable, I talked about that transparent, so that they actually understand what their money's going for. And the state law in Texas makes the impact fee process transparent. We have to report, we have to show the projects we're going to spend the money, and we also have to report on it every six months. I'll talk about that a little bit. The biggest benefit for our city is flexibility. Tom and I were talking and there's some roads in Odessa where you've collected money on those roads. Developments have come in, they've escrowed money on that road. Well, that money has to be used on that specific roadway. On an impact fee, there's flexibility in that. Developer comes in, you can collect the money, and you can spend it in the city's highest priority area. You don't have to necessarily spend it on the adjacent roadway. You have to spend it on a road that meets some criteria, but you have some flexibility when you spend it. You can also, it's legal, that's important, we follow the legal statute. It's consistent with the overall city's goals for infrastructure. A lot of cities will utilize an impact fee to incentivize or maybe disincentivize a certain type of development based on their comprehensive plan, whether it be, I had one community that they had no goal, that they wanted a sit-down restaurant on the main street, they kept getting fast food restaurants. So, they charged the highest rate they could for faster restaurant and incentivized the, or incentivized the sit-down restaurants. So, but that usually goes with the overall goals of the city. Faster development process, typically, a lot of the time, if you remember, the individual determination takes longer. So, in theory, the determination of the infrastructure cost is faster than impact fee. Some cities, that means more than other cities. Some cities have a very long process, some cities don't, but in general, it's a little bit faster on the developer's side. So, what is an impact fee? Really, what an impact fee is, it's a mechanism to cover the cost that growth is putting on the system. In other words, growth to pay for growth of infrastructure, growth and development to pay for growth of infrastructure. governed by chapter 395 of the Local Government Code. There's a lot of things I'll talk about today. You may ask, well, why are we doing it that way? The answer sometimes is, well, that's what the state law tells me to do. And some other states I've worked in, they have a little more flexibility. Texas is very prescriptive. It's a one-time fee. That, that's important, the developer pays it once, and then they don't have to pay it again. It's assessed at, this is important, it's assessed at plat. So, most of the performance that developments are doing are done at the plating time or the preliminary stage. But it's not paid to building permits, so they figure out what their fee is at plat. They actually won't pay it to building permit. The thought behind that is they're not paying it until they're sure the development's going to happen, because sometimes you see plats happen, the development doesn't happen. If you pay that building permit, there's a good likelihood that building's going up. Things that are payable by the impact fee. Construction cost, basically, if you think about anything that you've talked about in the master plans, it's pretty much eligible for an impact fee. Roadways to meet the thoroughfare standards, upsizing of utility lines, survey and engineering costs. There are some communities, impact fees are not a silver bullet, they're not going to cover your entire infrastructure, but they're going to be a portion of your CIP. Some cities choose to use impact fees just to get the engineering ready. That's, you know, roughly 15% of the project cost. They're trying to get the projects shovel-ready, so that when developers come in, they know exactly what they're doing. A lot of times, the hard part in telling a developer what to do, you haven't done the engineering plans, you don't know where the road's supposed to go, you haven't done that detail yet. So, there are some cities that choose to use it for survey and engineering fees. You can also use it to pay off debt service, impact fee CIPs. That's what a lot of cities choose to do, is they issue the debt, and then they start paying that debt off faster when they collect the impact fees. Those are kind of common things. I've talked about some of the things you can't pay with impact fees. If it's not on our CIP, that's not eligible. We're developing the CIP anticipation of growth. The biggest one is operation and maintenance. You can't pay for operation and maintenance. This is not a fee for that. If it's an existing need, we can't use to pay for that. For example, an easy example is, a traffic signal's needed today. We probably can't reimburse, we can probably reimburse part of the traffic signal, because part of the study, we'll look at it and say, well, traffic signal's needed today, so we can't reimburse all of it. However, it's going to help future growth as well, so we can, we'll, we do that calculation as part of the study. Another example is an elevated storage tank. You know, you don't build an elevated storage tank for today. Part of it's for today, but a portion is for tomorrow. So, we calculate what percentage of that elevated storage tank's for today versus what's for tomorrow, so we can only calculate what's for tomorrow. And then, another thing is, if this program was to move forward, the city has to administer the program. All the funds that are collected for the program have to go back to projects or project-related. You can't pay for staff time to administer the program. So, Tom can't get a new FTE based on this program. There are seven real components to an impact fee. I'm going to touch on these pretty briefly. The first six is really our job. John and I will put together, would put together a study and do it. Seventh is really council's job with our help in telling you what other cities do. That's the policy side, and that becomes important in the ordinance writing of an impact fee. So, service areas, this is probably one of the first steps we would do in an impact fee study. What's important is funds collected within a service area have to be spent within that service area, and you have to spend it within 10 years. So, there's a limitation. If you collect money from a developer, you got to spend it within 10 years. Water and sewer are typically citywide. It's actually going to be beyond your city limits. I'll show you a map in a second. It's basically wherever you provide water and service to, you can collect an impact fee from. You have to provide them service. You can't collect an impact fee from someone who don't provide service. That probably just makes good sense. Transportation, this is one of those things in the law that is not as clearly defined, but it's limited to six miles. So, if you can imagine, the city of Odessa, it's bigger than six miles, so we can't just have one service area. Another thing about roadway, we can only charge impact fees for roadways within the city limits. We can't charge in the ETJ. A little different than water, roadway, we can't charge in the, in the ETJ. Just to give you some examples, Lubbock has seven to nine service areas. They're in the process of doing their impact fee study. They haven't decided yet. They've got options between seven and nine. Midland has five, and a city called Fayetteville, maybe none of you all have heard of, has one. It's a very small city, they have one service area. We're looking at Odessa, and I'll show you a map in a minute. It probably looks like it's going to be three service areas. Midland's a little deceiving, it really has four. A fifth one is the airport. It doesn't really, it's not really a service area. Drainage is another impact fee study. We don't talk about it. Most cities don't have a drainage impact fee. It's very uncommon, but it can be city and regional-wide. The reason most cities do not have a drainage impact fee is there's development regulations that require you to detain on-site, and you can't, you can only charge their impact to the system. If they're detaining on-site, there's no impact to the system. So, but it is another option. So, this is the water and sewer service area maps. As you can see, the city limits are outlined in the yellow and black, so you can go wherever you serve. This is consistent with your master plans, this is where you're serving. Roadway, I just took some, this may not be the final one, but saying, if you were divided up amongst state laws' limitations, this is what it would look like. I just used some logical, I used university as kind of a dividing line between service area one and two, and then, you know, the loop between one and three, kind of just made sense to me. But this is not final, this is just to illustrate the purposes of, if you collect an impact fee in service area two, you have to spend it in a project in service area two, one, three, you have to spend those areas. So, when you're developing the service area map for roadway, you kind of have to think about how you want the program to operate. This would be one of the first questions we ask, and we can always revise it. This is just kind of a straw man's version of what it would look like.
So, even if it was in that six-mile limit, it still has to be in that service area?
Yeah, we have to establish the service areas. We've tried to work where we've made it more flexible than that, but we have to establish the service areas. The land use assumptions, land use assumptions are important. They establish the infrastructure demand. So, if you have a lot of growth, you're going to have more infrastructure demand. You don't have as much growth, you won't have as much infrastructure demand. The positive thing about Odessa is the work that was done on the water and wastewater and transportation master plans, we've already started thinking about that 10-year growth. So, the large, first part of the impact fee study, land use assumptions, a lot of the framework has been set. So, we've already started thinking about what that growth's going to be, and it can be derived from those efforts. So, in theory, if we pull the land use that we projected for 10 years in the water wastewater master plan, we can utilize that in the impact fee study. So, this is something that's kind of already been thought about. And as well as the capital improvement planning, there's infrastructure master planning. Well, you've just adopted recently your water and wastewater master plan, so you got to check on that. And the transportation master plan was presented to you several times, you kind of got to check on that. So, the second major element, we've got a really good starting point. There's some, the part of the infrastructure master plan that we have to do is we have to figure out that, how much is growth related versus how much is existing related? We have to figure out that calculation, but we know the projects, we figured out what the projects are at this point. So, there's a little bit of work to do on that. And that brings us to the CIP. Unfortunately, chapter 395 of the Local Government Code uses the word CIP, and I think that's very confusing, because the city has a CIP list, and then you have another CIP list in impact fees. Some cities have even changed that name, but they're a little bit different. They're very similar, they're a little bit different. The biggest difference is typically, you look at five years, and that's really what you know in your city's CIP, and in impact fee, we look at 10 years. Now, all of your CIPs in here have looked out to 10 years, but there's less confidence after the five years. It's really, really confident for five years. With impact fee, we look at 10 years. The other thing that the CIP will have is we can recover some money from completed projects. So, if you've completed a project recently, like I mentioned, the elevated, an elevated storage tank, if you completed it two years ago, we can still recover some of that money to pay debt service off. You wouldn't see that in your traditional CIP. Or if you have like University Drive that's under construction, we could calculate how much that was to serve future growth and recover some of that money. So, we may have some projects that already have been completed, but generally speaking, most of the CIP will match close to what you've already seen in the master plans. This is the roadway master plan, so you've seen this, it's been presented to you before. So, this would be very similar. Obviously, like the loop that shows up on here, that's outside the city limits, so we couldn't, we could not include that in the impact fee CIP, but we might be able to include a project like university. So, it would, this would be our foundation, we would just tweak this a little bit. Very similar to the water and wastewater. Pretty much, the water and wastewater is pretty solid except for the existence. You would have to look at the existing. So, this is the, if you look at it, the water and wastewater has red for five years, blue for 10 years. We're really taking the red and blue, and that's really the impact fee CIP. So, that foundation has already been laid, and very similar for wastewater. The red and blue projects is what we really look at. Our biggest task is to figure out how much of that's for growth, how much of that's for existing. Service unit, this is probably one of the most confusing elements of an impact fee study. It's really how, once we calculate, how do we fairly distribute this among all the development? So, really, it's a measure of how to distribute among the future development. Roadway uses a term called a vehicle mile. I'll explain that to you. The first time I heard vehicle mile, it was confusing to me. So, if you hear it, we'll kind of explain that. Water and wastewater is a little bit simpler, it's a meter size. What size is your meter? That's what you're going to pay on. So, I'll start with roadway. So, the roadway is based on two factors. It's based on a number of trips they generate and how far do you travel? So, that's the demand. Well, believe it or not, there's actually three books that were this thick, it's all online now, but they were this thick, that talked about how much does a single-family traffic generate? How much does commercial generate? So, we utilize those books to come up with this. And then, we utilize trip length, which generally speaking, it comes from the National Household Travel Survey plus the service area radius. So, for a single-family development, the book that I mentioned tells us they generate roughly one trip, 0.99 trips in the PMP. They travel approximately three miles. That's the service area length, that's where we're capped at. And so, it's 2.9, 2.79 vehicle miles, just that's the math multiplied together. And I think if y'all think about your home-to-work trip, you probably are traveling more than three miles, I would assume, from home to work. So, this is, we're capping it at that service area radius. Very similar for a big box retail, they generate 3.81 trips per the vehicle mile. Now, one of the things that commercial has is they have this trip reduction of 34%. That means if you're coming home, if you leave this meeting and you stop by the store to get a milk, it's not a new trip, you just happened to divert the trip. So, we reduce that, multiply. So, these are just factors. All it is, is our job as part of the impact fee study, we calculate how much does it cost a dollar per mile, vehicle mile? So, say it's $1,000 per vehicle mile, that would be $2,790 for a single-family home. I don't know what that value's going to be, but this is just a conversion table. Little, little bit easier to do wastewater and water. It's based on meter size. A typical meter for a house, maybe a three, four-inch meter, while a shopping center might be a two-inch meter. So, we're calculating what it costs to serve a, a single-family home. So, a single-family home may be equivalent to 10, two-inch meters. So, the two-inch meter would pay 10 times the amount of a single-family home. Little bit more straightforward on the water side, because it's all based on meter, a little less straightforward on the roadway side. At the end of the day, calculation, a lot of components, a lot of the components that we've started and got to get started on, it's the cost of the CIP divided by growth. We have the cost of the CIP, we know the growth, but what we really have to calculate is what's that recoverable cost? That's the difference between existing and future. One item I want to elaborate on this a little bit is there's a credit calculation, or we can take 50% of the math. Well, this was actually added. So, in 1987, the impact fee statute came out, and I believe in 94, somewhere around that time, the developer said, wait, we come in, we pay taxes, we benefit the city, there's no recognition of those future taxes, if you will, that double dip. If you pay taxes, those taxes may go to a project. So, state statute said you can have a financial analysis done to figure out what that double dip is, to include utility rates and havelorm taxes, or you can just take 50% of the max. And all my reading, I don't know why they came up with 50% other than it seemed like a reasonable number. So, typically, what we do is we calculate the maximum fee, we show what it would be at 50%, and then we see if we want to go higher. I can tell you if you do the credit calculation, it will be higher than 50%. You know, most cities, it ends up being like a 75% of the max or higher. If you think about it, your havelorm taxes and utility rates are not paying 50% of the rate for growth. It's a very conservative estimate to do 50%, but that's something for council to consider if we were to do the study and you say, man, the, the impact fees seem to be less than I thought they would be? Well, maybe because we cut it in half in the study as opposed to doing the credit calculation. So, why calculate the maximum impact fee? That's what we do. Our job is to calculate the maximum impact fee. City council will establish the rate. So, if we say it costs $1,000 per meter, that's, that's what our calculation shows, that's the max you could set it at. Y'all can set anywhere from zero to 1,000. One of the things that the statute provides to is, once we calculate that maximum fee and you set the rate, can it be charged immediately? The answer is, state, what state law says is, anything currently platted has a year to pull a building permit. So, anyone that's already in the system, already platted, we usually define platted as final platted, they have a year to pull the building permit. And that's what state statute requires. Other checks and balances? The answer, Jeff, is that a lot of the impact fees are based upon your master plans that are adopted. So, they're based upon something that's already done. The purpose of the impact fees is we take those master plans and calculate it. So, in theory, there's already a different process that's adopted, planning process, this is calculate the fee. The other checks and balances, the capital improvements advisory committee. What the capital improvements advisory committee is required to do is it's required to be made up of 40% of the development community. So, if like you have eight folks on the team, you'd have to have four from the development community. You have to have 40% of that committee made up of the development community. We have to meet with them at least twice, and one of them is to discuss the assumptions. So, the impact fees is broken up into two steps. The first is the assumptions, which is the land use assumptions and CIP. So, we have to meet with them. We actually have to accept the land use assumptions and CIP. We think that's, should be relatively straightforward, because they're based on your master plans. The second step after we do that is then that's when we write the ordinance. So, the capital improvements advisory committee has to meet with those at least twice. Most communities, we meet with them at least four or five times before we get to a place we're comfortable moving forward with. But they have to meet at least twice, and we have to do two public hearings at council. So, the first public hearing will be on the CIP and land use. The second public hearing is on the ordinance, the impact fee itself. Are they easy to administer? Part of our job, if we were to help you with the impact fees, is we try to set them up to be easy to administer. Water and wastewater are based on meter size, so if someone pulls a tap fee, they would pay the impact fee with it. Roadways are based on that, what I already told you with the table, and we basically try to create a spreadsheet, so if someone types in single-family home, it pops out what their fee is. You'll never see, you never, the development community or individual home builder would never see that calculation outside of this meeting, they'd just see what the fee is. It must be updated every five years. That's something that the development, the state law requires, is you have to reevaluate every five years, and every six months, we have to meet with the advisory committee, and you have to report to the advisory committee how much money's been collected, how are you using the money? So, there's some oversight from the advisory committee after they've advised us on the study. Keys to a successful project, this is kind of Jeff's one-on-one. You got to have good master plans. In cities, we don't work in good master plans, we just have to take a step back and figure that out. Well, ideally, you have good master plans, so they were just done. You got, you need to have city council and city management support. If, you know, the cities that we worked on, that doesn't have that support from the beginning, it's hard to get that beginning. But if you have it, it's there. You want to have stakeholder involvement, and we don't want to do this in a vacuum. The advisory committee might be that stakeholder involvement, or you may want to have outreach to the advisory committee. And I just listed some people that are interested using this project. Most of the time, you see the real estate and developer community interested in. Really want to understand the goals of the project. Some cities, like I'm working in the city of Austin right now, really, their goals of Some cities, like I'm working in the city of Austin right now, really their goals of the project is to simplify the process. The process is extremely complicated, their goal is to simplify it. I've worked in other communities where the process is to make growth pay for more of their impacts. There are always different goals in the process, and really understanding that allows us to write the right ordinance. Good comparison data, West Texas is new to impact fees, there's not as many cities that have them. Midland is actually the first city in West Texas to have them, they adopted them two, two, three weeks ago. Lubbock is scheduled, current schedule shows may have next year, may have twenty twenty. There's a lot of other communities throughout the state that have them as well, but those are just two that are in West Texas that I put on there. Impact fee summary, and I try to break this out. This is actually a slide I showed when we were going through the funding of transportation master plan. Impact fees are for future users, it's a one-time fee. It's growth dependent, so if you don't grow, you're not collecting revenue. You may not have the infrastructure needs if you're not growing either. It can't be used on maintenance, it cannot be used on assistance deficiencies, and it's collected after the one-year grace period. So this is just a kind of a summary of every, kind of the important things that I wanted you to take away.
Jeff, before you, you head on to the next topic. You guys worked on Midland's impact fees, right? As you mentioned, they recently adopted that fee. How did that process work in Midland? And then secondly, what is the current fee structure like?
I think the process went really well, like I said, they didn't have the master plans. They were, the water and wastewater master plans were ongoing, so they were going to go in at the same time. And they did not have a capital improvement plan for a roadway. So part of the, part of the beginning process was to figure out what those plans were. So we spent a lot more time in phase one. And phase two, the biggest, the process went well, and I think there was a general recognition of, of the needs of what they needed. The growth needs, the needs. There was also a general recognition of affordability. So I think the whole process was about how do we balance affordability on the residential side versus the growth needs that it causes. And so the process is really well, what they ended up doing, and I didn't bring the schedule with me. Is they end up adopting a rate for non-residential, it was a little different than residential. So they opted a rate for non-residential, and the residential is a twenty-five percent discount. And it roughly came out to, when you combine the three together, I think roughly five thousand, between five and six thousand per house.
By three together, you're talking?
Water, sewer, and roadway. I don't remember the break, I think roadway was roughly three thousand, and water and sewer are roughly twelve hundred each.
So when you said there was a general recognition of the need and the process, recognition by who? The council, the developers, the, the whole, everybody?
We relied a lot on our advisory committee, which was made up of representatives of the development community. The advisory committee was actually three staff members and six folks from the development community. And they gave comments to council. And, and council had their own comments too, reading their comments. But I think the biggest things that came out when I simplified their comments is everyone recognized those needs for infrastructure. How, how that gets spread around was the discussion, and the other needs was, if you watched the council tapes, which I don't know if they're online, but I was at the meetings. But most of the discussion was about single family housing and affordability.
There were a couple of comments that were made about the fact of seeing that this was a way to make sure that the infrastructure happened. So that the developers weren't having to quit badly. In other words, one, one or two of them were talking about, they really can't believe it was. And then, you know, that if, if we know that these funds will be used towards helping development continue to occur, so that we're not having to wait as long to have it. That was, that was a couple of the comments and how it all fits. I'm not an expert, so I forget where we're at.
Yeah, the, the committee, I mean, there was nine people on the committee, and, and the land use assumptions in the CIP, they all kind of had their universal agreement on that. When we got down to the fee, each committee member had like a little bit different perspective and they provided their comments to council, kind of individually, if you will. But.
So if you, I'm, I'm sorry, because I'm just not as knowledgeable about these as I would like to be. But if these impact fees, they're, they're paid when the building permit is accepted?
Yes, when, when they apply for the building permit.
Okay. And at that point, has anything been done? Does the city then do the work? And this is a reimbursement to the city? Or how, I mean?
Depends on the situation.
I'm trying to understand the timing.
So typically for single family homes, they need to build, I'm gonna go with single family, and I'll talk about the difference in commercial. And I'm just gonna simplify it generally. Single family homes have to build quite a bit of infrastructure, usually the building in new areas, they may have to extend the road. So they might, the single family home might have built the, let's say Yukon. They may have built two lanes of Yukon to get to their development. So when they're pulling the impact fee, they actually get offsets for that. So they may have already satisfied their need because of that. In some cases, they may not have to build anything. And when they don't have to build anything, the city collects the money, then the city figures out where to spend the money. Does that answer your question? On commercials, more often that there's, when commercials coming in, a lot of times they're picking the spots where they don't have as many infrastructure improvements. So they may pay the fee and then the city figures out where to spend the money. And in some cases, you know, what I think the comment that Tom was alluding to that Midland said is the, the advisory committee had this kind of acceptance if the city would be proactive. Because hey, this is the road we want to build, much like y'all issuing a ninety-three million dollar debt, we want to build this road. And then they picked the impact fee and paid that debt off, because then they can get in front of development as opposed to being reactive. So that was kind of, I think, where you were going, is can we use impact fees to be more proactive than reactive?
Similar to, we're about to need to build a lot of big sewer line up to the northeast. And right now, we're actually not able to expand up there because we just don't have enough sewer capacity.
This is P and Q?
Uh, yes, uh-huh. And so it helps if the city can build that, but that's a huge expense. If the city doesn't have a revenue basis to work with that, then it's harder for us to.
So if you were to build the, the major sewer line that goes up there and it costs money, as you collect the money from the roads, like you go to pay your debt service off on that road. But the issue with impact fees is it's not guaranteed, so if growth stops, you still are responsible for that debt service. But it's a funding mechanism to pay that. And water and sewer, that's pretty common, you see a lot of times the water and sewer impact fees going to pay debt service off. Well, on roadways, typically on roadways, you see them as a partnership with development community. You know, if someone comes in on Yukon, the developer will build two lanes, the city will partner with some impact fees to build the other two lanes, or et cetera. You'll see more of a partnership on the roadway side, while on the water, you see paying debt service off. Every city is a little different, but that's a little bit of commonality among cities. Because most of the time, on the water and wastewater system, you don't see the developers building the elevated storage tanks or the massive sewer lines you need. So the city's building those. On the roadway side, I mean, developers commonly build arterials, so it's a partnership. And any other questions on, on impact fees before I move on? Those are.
I'm totally confused. I really am, I am totally confused. I, I, I've got it where you can spend it, I don't have it where you get it.
What do you mean, what, what do you mean by that?
You've done a good job of telling us where we can spend it, what uses we can use, what you can't use, where's the money coming from?
I don't really, I don't think we understand the mechanics of it.
Sure.
At all.
Absolutely. So I can try to speak.
I mean, it's confusing to me. What are the, what are the homeowners and the developers going to pay, you know?
At the beginning of it, it, it is confusing because there is not, you go, okay. This is a funding tool that you have in your toolbox. A big funding tool that you have right now for building water and sewer infrastructure is predominate your rates. So you're, all y'all as current citizens, as growth happens and y'all want to get out in front of it. Y'all are the ones that are paying for that large P and Q sewer line out there today through your rate structure. And paying off bonds and that sort of stuff. Well, another tool that the state has allowed you to enact as a community is go, you know something? The development that's coming in out there should pay their fair share of that. Not burden your current citizens with having to build infrastructure that's for future development. Now, if you make a policy or an economic decision of we want to do that, that's okay. You know, but that's a discussion that y'all need to have with your current citizens in the community of hey, we can maybe not raise your rates because we are generating money from future development that's coming in to help offset some of these costs. And so maybe you don't have to raise your water and sewer rates for another five years. Kickstarting is kind of tough because there's no money. Your impact fee bank account that has zero dollars in it right now. So after a period of time, as you're collecting impact fees and you've got five million dollars sitting over here. It gives you some flexibility of where you're going to spend it, when.
So, so where'd that five million come from?
May, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I think, part of what I think they're struggling with, because I, I don't understand either. You said the fee is determined at plating, but is only due at building permit. So if Mr. Allen develops a subdivision, he doesn't pay the impact, but when mom and pop go to get a building permit for that house, that's when it's paid?
That's when it's paid.
Okay. Well, okay, I mean.
Yeah, that's fair question, yeah. So what we do is.
Building permits, you pay.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to break it down to, where is the money coming from?
I'll talk a little about the process, I, I do a ton of private development. The process is, is plating is when you, or zoning, if we go back, but plating is where you figure it performing, you're also figuring out your subdivision requirements. So in, in the cases of that, that's when it's being assessed at plating time. So you're figuring out what dollars you do. In some cases, that may be offsite infrastructure required to do. So in some cases, when you do the plating process, the city may say, you need to build Yukon, I'm just picking on that road because it's new, it's a road. You may need to build Yukon, so we'll assess and say, okay, you're building Yukon. Your impact fee is X dollars. Well, if Yukon costs more than X dollars, you won't pay an impact fee. So in that case, it's not always the, the building permit, because in a single family, a lot of times you, it's not net neutral. There are subdivision ordinance requirements now. So you still do those subdivisions, so the process standpoint that we do is what is your subdivision ordinance required the developer do today? And then the second question is, if you're, is there credits due towards impact fees based on your subdivision ordinances? So commonly on water and wastewater, typically you don't have to do, the subdivision ordinance is not requiring you to build an elevated storage tank. So you don't, you typically pay your water and wastewater meter when the building permit or the water meter comes in. On roadway, it's sometimes with the development at plat, because you're building the infrastructure to support the plat. Or sometimes it's at building permit, it's a case-by-case basis.
So when you're back to the developer, and I guess I'm kind of confused too, but the price, it's just, and I'll just say as simple as I know how to say it. The impact fee, does that affect the cost of the house that, I mean, is that raising the?
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all the cost can be passed on the consumer.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it depends.
But I think this was one of the, the questions that was asked in, in the Midland council meeting and, and was, was talked about. Either way, the utility has to get paid. And so whether it's paid through the, the purchase of the property from the developer and you pay him for all the water line that he put in, et cetera, et cetera. Then it's going to get paid. If the, if the city installed the infrastructure, then through the assessment, it's still going to get paid. So in the, in the same, it's all a cost that has to happen, it's how you assess it and pick it up.
So if the developer puts in the water and sewer in the streets, there are no impact fees? Do you understand?
If the, if you're, it's a possibility, yeah.
Uh, so I'll clarify that question. It's system-wide improvements, like local streets, like your local roadway, that would be credit. But if you build like Yukon or Grandview or a major road.
Tom, that, respectfully, that doesn't make sense, because if the impact fees are five or six thousand dollars per lot. Every developer in the world would write you checks as fast as they could, because this costs them twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a lot to put in the water and sewer and pave the streets.
Well, that's why I just said it doesn't classify for local streets, or your six-inch water line that's going to your house.
Okay, so none of that.
None of the local stuff, just just system-specific that's benefiting major projects.
The twenty-four inch water line?
Right.
So it, so it is a five or six thousand dollar increase to the house?
So let me ask this. Yeah. There's a little house being built, not little, but there's a house being built a few blocks away on Washington. Say Natasha's building this house for herself, will she have an impact fee? That's, it's a single lot, other than her loans going in? So is there an impact fee for that as well?
Yeah, if you have the policy that she pulls a three-quarter inch meter for that particular home and doesn't exist today. So there's the demand of that three-quarter inch meter, she pays her fair share of whatever that value is, is set by the council.
And so Midland had opted that, like the Natasha's, I'm just gonna throw you that. Would pay a reduced fee, is that what Midland has done?
Jeff knows more about it, but it sounds like they set a, they set a fee, let's, I'm just gonna make up a number.
Right.
And say it was a thousand dollars for water. You know, if they pulled a meter, the water impact fee was a thousand. For a commercial development that pulled a three-quarter inch meter. But then the home would only pay seven hundred and fifty dollars. So they said, hey, we're not going to burden, let's not burden our home purchasers. Let's let a little bit more of that burden fall over on the development community, I mean, the non-residential, the commercial community. Because we feel like maybe they can afford it a little more. So that was their.
Okay, so like this, this single family, this one lot, they would pay an impact fee on water and sewer?
Yes.
But not on roads?
Yes, they pay roads also.
Depending on what road improvements that occur within their area.
Okay, but like using this example where it's in a residential.
If the council decided.
Nothing's gonna grow.
Yeah, but there, there's a, you know, if there's no home, there's no business there today. One comes in, they put demand on the system based on the proportional number that was calculated in the state.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
So most of the times when we're doing this is we'll actually ask Tom for subdivisions that have happened within the last three years in Odessa. And say, what happened under that ordinance? What would happen under this ordinance? And that's kind of what we did in Midland, and you can compare the two. In some cases in Midland, the, the, uh, single family homes built more roadway infrastructure than their impact fees were due. In some cases, they built zero roadway infrastructure. So in the cases where they built more infrastructure, they didn't pay a roadway impact fee. In the cases where they built nothing, they paid the roadway impact fee.
The ones now that were done three years ago are gonna go back and be.
No, they're not, no, we were using that as a comparison, now that they're not. It's to educate council, if that development was to come in today.
Okay.
What would happen in the process today? But we, we don't retroactively do anything.
In my mind, developed lots in those subdivisions. You know, ten, fifteen lots didn't get developed, they would pay an impact fee when they, the home was constructed there.
If it was already developed and platted, if there would be a year.
Why can't you make, I mean, we're talking about certain developments, but yet there's, as you said, there's been a house built over on Washington Street. Why can't we get, why can't you overall, when somebody comes in to get a permit? Why can't you charge a fee to that house builder or that, that home that's being built and they get the permit? And charge a different fee for the commercial side of it? And then utilize it to these, these needs that we may have where it's fair to everybody?
And I think that's what this is trying to do.
It's a, y'all's choice. We, the study itself just sets a maximum fee that you're allowed to charge.
Oh, and I understand all that, I mean, I'm just trying to make it simple. I mean, we don't have anything, something that everybody understands, somebody that, something that is equitable across the board. Where we're not paying for everything that's going on each side of Odessa, you know, that it is equitable all the way through. Where based on whatever price that house is, if it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you pay a hundred dollar impact fee. I think everybody can live with that at permit time, and then, you know, we're paying catch-up anyway. You know, it's kind of hard to get ahead in the ballgame right now, it's catch-up. So if we start something, maybe we can lease something for the grandkids to best with later on.
I think, uh, what you're, I think what you're saying is kind of what they're, what it gets you to. Uh, one of the first questions we get from almost any developer that comes in here from out of town is what are your impact fees? And, but, so at the end of it, and whatever, if you were to opt in for finding what you wanted to do. Then it would have a table that would say associated with this area. So when you came in to get your building permit, you would know.
But there is, yeah. That's pretty simple, that, to me.
Yeah, that, the ideal is to be as simple as predictable, the hard part is, you know, our job is to calculate, you know, what the impact fee is.
Well, that's y'all's job.
And, and then y'all's job, y'all's job is to figure out what percentage are we gonna charge on that, that's fair. That, that to me is harder than our job is, you know, our job is to tell you like it's a house and comes in, this is the impact on the system, that's mathematics. Y'all's job is to figure out the policies.
And one of the things, just questions I've got is, okay, we have, especially in certain parts of the town, people aren't coming into the city. They're drilling water wells, things like that. So would we be keeping people outside of the city? By, it's gonna cost me five thousand dollars extra. You know, I don't know, that's just an off-the-wall question.
The market drives home pricing. Yes, there's a value there associated, you know, if you're gonna say a thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, where it's gonna say it's built in. And it's an easy thing to say. If you talk to real estate folks, you know, three years ago here, would have given you a different thought process of what y'all's home values were compared to now. And in most communities where they've had impact fees over a period of time, the, the market, that, the talk of the impact fees kind of melts away. And it's much more driven just by what the market can stand. If it's a high-growth market, they're building as fast as they can and charging as much as they can.
And what you, what, we've done a lot of this research over the years, and some certain cities have asked us to do this. Is when you talk about percent of construction cost, like a lot of times, to Tom's point, it's a lot of the malls or they're expecting an impact fee because they don't have to do as much infrastructure they're finding. And so they're expecting that, so a lot of the revenue you're missing is not necessarily from the single family homes because they're building infrastructure. It's more of the non-residential who may not be, or some of the denser developments, maybe the apartment complex that's not. So sometimes the, the discussion a lot of times revolves around single family. Which in reality, if you think about percent of construction cost of a, of a fast food restaurant versus a single family home, the percent of construction cost is higher. Because the cost of a home is lower than the cost to build a restaurant. So.
Just, just in, I'm gonna put you on the spot. What are, what was our total construction cost, commercial and real estate last month?
It's in our report, I can look it up.
And I can't find the report, I can't do it. And, yeah, turns about, about a dog, about a whole dog.
The comment, the comment Charlie made about, let's, hey, I think we ought to lean a little bit more on commercial versus residential is a common theme in communities, in discussions that y'all inherently are running through your head. About, hey, I don't want to price out somebody that wants to come in and buy a modest-sized house, is this gonna price them out of?
That goes to the, the comment of this should match your goals of the city, you can structure ordinance to match your goals. That is very common, uh, uh, another community I worked in years ago, Flower Mound, they, they didn't, they didn't have any non-residential, so they did the exact opposite. They were booming on residential, they said, we need non-residential, so they did the exact opposite.
But I guess if you did about, about dollar, what difference does it make? I mean, if I did point one percent for the home, and point one percent for the commercial. I mean, it, it's equal, but I'm gonna get a whole lot more money off that commercial than I am that, that.
It's proportional, that's the calculation we do, proportional to their usage.
What I'm saying is you don't have to kill the rest, the, uh, commercial side of it. Just by volume, it's gonna be more, or dollar value, it's gonna be more.
You're correct.
Yeah.
Their usage is greater than a single family, so they would pay proportionally more as the calculation is done. It's y'all's choice if you want to change what that dollar amount, they would be assessed.
Okay, can, can you walk me through something that's, I mean, it's very real, we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for line P and Q.
Right.
So can we use that to talk about in terms of an impact fee? Let's say that, that project is what, what is it, John, your, is it forty, fifty million?
Just close to fifty between the two.
Okay, fifty million dollars.
Right.
Okay, and that line's gonna be built and it is going to benefit the, the northeast or north and east part of Odessa. Okay, what, because this is something that's right here on us. So can you explain to me how you would do a combination or an impact fee? I mean, how are we gonna pay for that permit? What, what are our choices?
Yeah, this is the tricky, okay, we'll talk about P and Q. It runs from basically the south, east part of town all the way up to the northeast part of town. It will serve that whole corridor over there. The tricky.
It's about sixteen acres, eighteen thousand acres.
Yeah, so it's gonna serve that whole corridor. If you had impact fees to, let's say you enacted them five years ago.
But we didn't, so I mean, let's talk.
Okay, well, today, if you're gonna move forward with the project, it's gonna be bond-funded, right? So, and your calculation of how much is gonna be paid is all out of rates. So y'all are gonna pay, and your current citizens, through, through their rates.
That's one option, right?
Yeah, that's the current option y'all are in, right?
Right.
The other one is, is you, you pay super hard line, and you go, whatever developer comes in along the corridor, they have to pay their, some piece of it. The tricky part about sewer, we're getting specific here, and what always happens, you would love it, cause it's gravity and the low point's down in the southeast and it goes up, you would love the development to come in at the bottom. And go, okay, they're gonna build their piece. And then the next development would come in right after that, and they'd build their little piece. Well, guess what happens? Five hundred acres comes in at the very top end of it, and you go, all right, y'all want service? You fit the bill for fifty million dollars worth of infrastructure. Well, what's that developer gonna tell you? Can't afford it, and the numbers don't work. So, if y'all want the area to develop, you go ahead and you, y'all, y'all pay for it. I mean, this is what happens with most big capital improvement projects, cities build, it's kind of a little bit of the, you know, fuel the drinks. If you build it, they will come, there's a little bit of a balancing act there. So, depending on the size of the development, you can negotiate with them of pay, you know, by your current policy, you could go, you know something? We're gonna do a site-specific exercise, if your development should have to build five million dollars' worth of infrastructure to serve their development. And you negotiate some kind of three-eighty agreement or whatever.
That's that individual termination.
That's the individual option, and so they're gonna fit five million dollars of the fifty million.
It's also commonly called prorata, if you hear that term, a prorata portion of that fifty million dollars.
Yeah, so they're paying, you've done an individual analysis on line P and Q. It says this five hundred lot subdivision will contribute this much demand on that section of line. And you negotiate that with them, if they, then that becomes a negotiation between y'all.
As opposed to right now, for the subdivisions that have been built on the existing lines, are they, they're not paying anything like that?
Already in.
So, so this is, however we do this, this is a signi- this is a significant cost to developers.
The line P and Q.
The, if we did this impact fee on line P and Q.
Well, I think.
It depends on the development, it's proportional, if one lot comes in, it's, it's a fairly small cost. If it's huge development, then they pay their fair share.
But it's, what I'm saying is, I just wanna understand, it's a cost that right now, that same development, if they put it in and they can sack off of the existing lines, then there is no cost to them.
Let me see if I can, quick, so let's take that sixteen thousand acres, just using that number as a drain for that, that system. And so, one, already some of that acreage is developed, okay? Those people already have connections, they're already served, there's, there's nothing we're able to charge today. And except through our rate structure, okay? So we're out the debt service for fifty million. Now, we take the sixteen thousand acres that's not developed, and we take the land use map, which would say this area is residential and say this area is commercial, this area is whatever, and you make assumptions on that, tell me if I'm wrong, but you make assumptions. And in Atlanta, in a residential area, you're gonna get so many lots per, per acre, basically. And in another area, you're gonna get so many types of lots per acre. And then you take your fifty million, less the acreage that's already developed. So if it was fifty million and let's say twenty percent of it was already developed, that'd be ten million, you take right off of it. That, that part of the debt service is gonna have to come from all the rate areas. The forty million is now distributed amongst all the other properties, based on the methodology that you approve. If you do not approve it, it doesn't happen. But the methodology such that now, when I get my water meter for this sewer, but say when I get my water meter, it may still be tied at that same time, then I'm gonna pay whatever number would be for that area, for that.
And the, the short answer is if it's really fifty million and there's sixteen thousand acres, and you just, and I'm, I'm just seeing residential, four-inch breaker, that comes out to a thousand and fifty a house.
And I, and I showed y'all those numbers a year.
So those, those, that, that's kind of the, that's a realistic example. I think the example that I would use is, you know, today you have one option really, is to, to fund it and then build it and then either do a prorata to get money back, or that prorata is essentially done with the impact fee study. So rather than every development wondering what their fee would be, the impact fee tells it upfront, that, that's a little bit of a difference. Um, what you will see and what we can do is, we don't have the data now to do it, because we haven't done the study. But we can actually, you can actually figure out, like, if you were to impact fees, this is how much revenue you would collect over the next ten years, and this is how it affects your water rates. So you can actually understand, like, if the, and that, that's a tool that council can use, if, if you were gonna fund the fifty million dollars, the water rates may go up X. If you were to collect impact fees, it would be here, and those are the decisions that y'all have to make. Is it better to fund line P and Q with water rates, or is it better to fund through an impact fee? And those are, they're both, there's, there's nothing wrong with either one of those methodologies, it's just different.
That's a good ask, good question.
Let, let me finish.
Good, good.
So when we're talking about the ninety-three million we just did, and we were talking about monies that we're using on Fodger Grove, there are a lot of roads in the system that haven't been rebuilt and have the same problem, right? There's a lot of infrastructure inside the city that we don't have funds to redo. But we have to go spend twenty million dollars to put in a new road. The problem is, that twenty million dollars is money that's difficult to fund, right? How do I fund replacement of the old roads? Because it's being attached to us in this way. If we can find a way to distribute that funding, so that we are getting funds that will assist in doing new construction, but also doesn't take all the money away from us for me to do rehabilitation. This growth here is so robust, that it is just going to sap everything we have. This is just my opinion, I'm just, I'm just an employee of yours, but that's, the, the, the growth is just, I mean, this is a tremendous amount. We're talking, you know, close to two hundred million dollars in needs right now.
Now, we saw your reports, I mean, everything we've got's old and worn out, basically.
Well, a lot of things are, and, and one, one of the truths about that is, and a lot of people won't wanna hear this, but municipalities aren't really funded appropriately, so this body won't make me sit down here, whatever, and I'm not asking to be anyway, cause I wouldn't be the person for it. But what I'm telling you is, cities traditionally are not funded appropriately. Water rates pay O and N. The water rates you pay basically keep the system operating, but I've got how many miles of cast iron pipe that, I mean, just won't last forever.
Right.
It's gonna be gone. And when it happens, you're talking about hundreds and hundreds, if not a billion dollars. Uh, hundreds of millions or a billion dollars to replace them. And we never, from the beginning, made our rate structure where we were putting money aside. Let's take the water plant, if a water plant, which our water plant would probably cost three or four hundred million to build now. If you, let's say it was a hundred million, and we expect the water plant to last a hundred years. So, we, one year of depreciation's a million dollars. We should be putting a million dollars aside so that we stay home. We don't do that, I, I don't know that any city does that. But that's part of what the long-term, we talk about passing it on to our kids, it's coming, it is definitely coming.
And in the south, you see that more than on the east coast, the east coast, they grew at a slower rate. The south is growing fast, double-digit growth, you never saw that, like, New York City never grew over one percent a year. They just grew one percent a year for a long time, and they have all their infrastructure built, so they don't have to spend money on capital, they're spending on maintenance. So the east coast is all about maintenance, they don't have the capital, while in the south, you've got, you're hitting from both sides, maintenance and capital, which you've heard. And so it's kind of.
Roy, you got a question?
Yeah, I do.
Just gotta talk about something that exists out there today, and I'm talking about impact fees. Tom Lineach was built thirty years ago, whenever it was built, it's out there today, it goes to a lot of undeveloped property. If we did impact fees, as that property develops, that, they would pay impact fees in that area?
Just a question, okay? Somebody's got these property businesses goes out, restaurant, so another business decides to go in, they're gonna pay an impact fee on their building permit?
The, the.
Going back into an existing.
Unless, unless they upgrade their meter, so if the meter is a three, four-inch meter, and they need, whatever the new business uses a two-inch meter, they would pay the delta. So they only pay the delta of the impact fee, if they go in, if it's a restaurant, they become a restaurant, they don't pay anything.
Change.
Change, I'm sorry, it's change. They only pay the change in cost, so if a restaurant replaces a restaurant, they don't pay anything, so.
So, I, I think for, for us, I mean, obviously, I think the council's fully aware of the full extent of the needs, and they're significant. There are obviously needs for growth, because this community cannot not grow, right? We have to make sure that we're making appropriate accommodations for that. But we also have to ensure that some of our older neighborhoods, where we know we've already got compromised infrastructure, that we still have mechanisms to fund this. What this is, is just a different mechanism to generate some additional resources, so we can hopefully try and address all of the issues that, that we are gonna be facing pretty soon.
Want you to go and finish up, now we can make sure.
Uh, this is just other funding sources, we didn't wanna just focus on impact fees, but that's perfectly fine, if we just wanna go back. Street maintenance fees are another funding source to really allow more of your tax basis for dollars. This is a monthly fee based on the uses of a transportation system. Uh, one of the things that the general fund, it's not dedicated any funding source, it, it can be changed every year. This will be much like your water, wastewater rates, it's the same concept, except used to repair and plow stuff, it's a stable funding source. You know, you, you're aware of this, now you're at five point six-six million in a street maintenance fee that doesn't cover your needs, but this is something that can use to help continue that five point six-six million in the future. This is really for existing users, it would probably be a monthly fee, it would not be growth-dependent, so it's a stable funding source. It can be used on maintenance, it can be used under fist, assistance efficiencies, and it's typically collected on the utility bill. So much like any other fee you'll see on the utility bill. So this is just another funding source, as you're thinking about your pie, how do you divide, as Tom said, like, when I have demands and capital or maintenance? This could be another potential funding source for the city.
And, and another kind of benefit for that one is that it can relieve pressure on your general fund. So you have police, you have fire, you have streets, you have all these things, it, it may give you another full tool.
Most cities, when they're considering that fee, and there's a few of them, there's about eight to ten cities in Texas, they always consider what's better for them, a property tax increase or the fee, cause they can do the same thing, but, um, the problem, but the cities that chose to go with the street maintenance fee, they wanted that dedicated funding source. So that they knew that it wouldn't be a challenge every year to figure out how much to fund street maintenance, if you will. This is just a comparison of the two, um, a lot of people get these confused, like we said, impact fees will not go back to any existing home, it won't be retroactive. Street maintenance fee would be for the, the current residents, our, our future residents when they come in. Property taxes, you're familiar with this, it's another funding source, you can always look at your property taxes and figure out how much, you know, the pennies worth so much and, and, and you can bond debt, you're familiar with these, how much does the penny worth, how much can we bond debt? How much, you know, if we have taxes, how much do we need? A TIF is another thing, you have some TIFs in, in Odessa today, it's a, a tax increment reinvestment zone. And so I like talking off this graph, for those who don't understand a TIF, it's, there, there's a, it's a TIRS as well. There, they, you know, you freeze your property taxes, so say that building was worth a hundred thousand today, and then you, five years from now it's worth three hundred thousand, you can take that two hundred thousand increase, and it applies to that area. A caution on TIFs, you have to also think is, you also have to fund police and fire, and that goes to the general fund. So when you create a TIF, you have to remember, you also have to provide the other services. You're focusing on the area, but you have to remember to provide the other services, but it is a funding source that a lot of communities use. The transportation reinvestment zone is very similar to a TIF, except it's just transportation-related, it also doesn't require a board. So it, it's a lot of cities that I know they have a, you see this a lot in industrial areas where they know they wanna redo the roadways in the system. It's a transportation reinvestment zone, that basically is.
The mechanism is the same as the TIRS, right?
It's basically the same as the TIRS, except it doesn't have a board, and.
But you're still capturing the increment.
And this is all, same thing, it's only for transportation, you, like a TIF, you can use for building facades or some other sub-degree investment in that area, but this is just transportation. It's very so much now, it's become popular, it's a transportation management district, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, I don't have a slide on that, but I'll talk about that one in a little bit, because it relates to a PID. There's the three-eighty agreements, these are typical developer agreements, those still work, that, I, I would imagine those would still continue even if you won't with an impact fee, because you would come up with an agreement, I'm gonna build this amount of roadway, and I'm gonna get this kind of credit. So you have, you have three-eighty agreements, that's chapter three-eighty of the local government code. You have a PID, a PID offers cities and counties, um, to basically, a lot of, this is really usually for existing main, this is usually for maintenance. So we talked a lot about, say, Grant Avenue, where you may want to put in streetlights, you may wanna put in benches, you may wanna put in trash. Who's gonna take out the trash? Who's going to, how's the trash takeout gonna be funded? Who's gonna change the light bulbs, who's gonna water the plants? So PIDs you often see on the maintenance side to make sure that things, you know, you have parks, who's gonna maintain the park? This is actually just a, a, a tax, so when you look on your tax bill, you'll see the city of Odessa tax maybe, you know, forty-seven cents, the PID maybe X cents, it's an additional tax that that area pays and goes to certain things. I lived in the downtown Fort Worth PID for a while, and my maintenance went to the trash and the cleanup, and they actually have ambassadors, so they, it was kind of cool. They send out a report and say, this is what your money's going for, so the people actually see what it goes for. A mud is for growth, this is kind of a common example that you see more in the Houston area, you probably see this most in the Houston area. It's usually for the developments that are, have to build the fifty in, the fif- the fifty billion-dollar sewer line to get to the development, but how are you gonna fund it? So what a mud is, it's a vote to form the area, basically forms a tax entity within the area, and it's on your tax bill as well, so there'd be a city of Odessa, city of Odessa mud, one, and it would be used to fund, to pay the debt service off the infrastructure needed to serve that area. There's definitely pros and cons to that. You know, some cities, when they start, the city starts talking about doing things with taxes, most residents don't understand that, the different entities. So when one city wants to raise the taxes, like, whoa, whoa, I'm already paying eighty cents to the city, well, in reality, some of that's to the mud, some of that's to the city. But this is usually for growth areas that allows payment of infrastructure, it's, it's kind of a district in its own. A PUD, very similar to a mud, the difference is, is a PUD doesn't have taxing authority. It's, it's doesn't, it, it runs through kind of a city, it doesn't have the taxing authority, it's governed by a commission, which can be, um, appointed or elected, but they're very similar to a mud, you don't see these as often. The other one I mentioned was a transportation management district, the reason I mentioned it, didn't have it on the slide, it's pretty new. It's very similar to a PID, you take an area of town, and you assess a tax to figure out how to solve transportation infrastructure. It's, it's, instead of a, the transportation reinvestment zone, which is like a TIF that's on the increment, a, a transportation management's another, it's another taxing entity. It would collect taxes and build transportation projects. You're starting to see those in the metroplex a lot more, like in Plano, where it's really busy and they're trying to figure out how to build these big projects, and they don't have the ability to build it, so that all the businesses agree to come together to a transportation management district, and they're all paying, forget the rate, they're paying a tax rate on it. You know, we have, I put this on here not to show we have experience in other cities, but when you look at this list, you'll see some common things. A lot of people ask, how does this city do it? There's, I've worked in thirty-seven cities, so I've kind of gotten familiar with some of those cities, every city handles it different. The questions you asked tonight are very different than the Midland asked even, or, or than other cities in the area asking, in the location you are. But our job to here is to help answer your questions the best we can. A lot of the stuff we don't know yet, cause we haven't done the study, we've done the master plan, so we know the needs, we don't necessarily know what the, the, the growth needs would be in the dollar amount, so it's harder to answer that, but we've done quite a, quite a few of those. But that, that, that was, I ran through the last part pretty quick, because the focus was impact fees, but I wanted to say, impact fees are not the only, only bullet in your gun to solve this, there are other opportunities too.
Question? Brain hurts?
Yes, he'll send us.
Yes, yes, all right. Again, the purpose of bringing this to you is to give you some, some options to consider. We can certainly engage Kieran Moore to do a continued study on this, if in fact the council thinks they want to implement an impact fee or any of the other ones, we can certainly begin that process. If you wanna take a little bit of time to talk about it and then reconvene, have more discussion, we can certainly get you more information on, uh, Midlands, for example, I think is a good one, since they're next door. We can show you what their ordinance is, we can provide you copies of that and their programming, uh, so you'll have just more information, so you can make a much better, uh, prorata decision.
We'll just sit down, Midlands, break it down.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Copy, Nessa, you have a copy from this presentation for you all, I mean, you asked that and all that.
I'll get you Midland's ordinance, the first two pages is all you really need, because it's the rates, but the rest is a lot of legal stuff.
Thanks.
All right. We have twenty minutes until we start a briefing.